Mr. Manager? In fact, first, we have Dorothea Dix.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of the conversation around Dorothy Dix Park and the implementation and next steps. You've already had a couple of different presentations. Again, there's not a formal vote. Action required today, although on your regular agenda, there's a couple of items related to this presentation today, so you're hearing the presentation for the agenda items. And also, I think at this point would be good to get some affirmation at the end that we are headed in the right direction. So, we've been at a sort of a concept level, now we're getting ready to do some things, so if there's concerns, now's the time, because we're getting ready to do some stuff. So, with that, I'll turn over to Stephen Bentley and the staff.
Thank you, Manager. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Ruffin summarized perfect that we've had multiple presentations over the last few months, the adoption of the master plan in February, we had a brief presentation in July on how we may frame a MOU, and then in September, we had two work sessions. One that focused on the Phase One projects and a proposal from our partner, from the Dix Park Conservancy called Phase Now, and a work session that Kate Pierce did, looking at the plans and studies that would support the overall Phase One implementation. So, today's agenda, we'll look at, specifically, at a few of the Phase Now projects and how we might move those forward with some recommendations and timeframes. We'll also look at a range of costs for some of the plans and studies that were shared with you in September, and then finally, we'll highlight the next steps of our MOU. So, just a reminder for you, Phase Now is a proposal from the Conservancy to fully fund, from a capital perspective, 100% of the projects that are at a total cost of $7 million. These projects include advancing the design of the play area and gateway area along Lake Wheeler Road, $2 million for the renovation of All Face Chapel, $1 million for the Superintendent's House, $500,000 to support different improvements around the park, $500,000 for different plans and studies, and then $1 million in contingency. This map represents, the highlighted area that is in full color is the proposed area for all of Phase One. We bring this map up because the Phase Now projects that are proposed by the Conservancy support the direction of Phase One, implementing, or looking at the design of the play area, implementing some of the renovations for the chapel and the Superintendent's House. So, the All Face Chapel was built in 1955. It served all face, of course, throughout the history of the chapel itself, but it's remained empty for a long time. There were some interim uses by healing transitions. The proposal in the master plan is for it to be a gathering place that would support the community and the overall park programmatic goals, whether it be art, health, wellness, history, and legacy. As Ruffin pointed out on your agenda this afternoon, we have a 30-day public notice advertising for our intention to lease the chapel to the Conservancy for a renovation. The lease terms would then be brought back to you on November 19th. Similar, the Superintendent's House was built in 1923, and it was actually used, I believe the last use was for a volunteer coordinator for the campus, but it's remained empty for a long time as well. This is proposed to be used both as a public welcome center, but also offices for the Conservancy. On your agenda, like the chapel, we have a 30-day public notice, and we propose to come back on the 19th with lease terms for the council to consider. And the destination play and plaza area, the Phase Now proposal from the Conservancy is to donate $2 million towards the advancement of the design concepts for this area. This is an inspiring and all-inclusive play area for all ages. Our next step would be to seek authorization from the council on November 5th for an RFQ to advertise for design services. We would then negotiate with the recommended vendor, and in early 2020, bring back a proposal and a scope of work for that contract award. So, the plans and studies, at your last meeting, Kate Pierce highlighted several plans and studies that, the intent of them is to determine the feasibility of some projects that are really complex, like the creek project and the landfill and field, but it's also looking at how we need to be good stewards of the site. We're going to inherit a lot of buildings and grounds over the next decade. For the most part, it addresses a number of items that were not resolved at the master plan level, which is a concept-level document. And most importantly, these studies set the city up for future success for each one of the projects that you determine you want to proceed with. This is the list of projects that are in Phase One. It ranges from the gateway, which we talked about, the historic entry, which includes the chapel and the Superintendent's Cottage, renovations of the cemetery, the full renovation of the creek, and creation of fields, as well as looking at comprehensive utility planning and improvements. Each one of these eight projects, or seven projects, contribute or embrace the three core principles of the master plan, which is to open up and connect the site, build from what is there, and offer something for everyone.
Quick question.
Yes.
Will that include remediation of the landfill?
So, the creek feasibility, which I have right here, creek feasibility, that study will determine whether we need to remove a portion of the landfill, are we remediating it on-site. Since the master plan did not resolve that, it would be involved in that scope of work.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, this is a snapshot of some of the plans that we are proposing, from an equity plan, a community outreach plan. I just highlighted the creek feasibility. We don't have a comprehensive site survey, land survey of the site, and with a million square feet of buildings, although we did a lot of due diligence, we still want to continue to explore and look at the value of some of the buildings and the structural integrity of them, as well as look at how we're going to plan for future infrastructure improvements. The last line I put on there is a partnership with NC DOT. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has agreed to do an in-kind access study looking at Western Boulevard, as well as Centennial Boulevard, and how the different access points, whether it be Hunt and Boylan, how they will function in our overall planning of the site. And we're doing that through the Raleigh Transportation Office and Planning Department.
So, Stephen, one question about that. As far as the master plan for the infrastructure, are y'all going to go back and do like a survey of existing utility systems there, and what kind of shape they're in?
Some of them. So, we've been working with the Public Utilities Department, I guess Raleigh Water, and we're trying to make the determination, what do we invest in, knowing some of it is going to be abandoned?
Right.
So, this study and some of the surveying will go hand in hand to determine which we want to invest in to locate and then do an integrity analysis of. This is the cost ranges for each one of these studies. I want to note that this is just the capital costs. In previous meetings that we had shared with you is that this project is going to have impact on future staffing for not only the Parks Department, but as well as possibly transportation or engineering services. So, the costs you see here today are just the costs to conduct the studies. We will bring back to the council in early 2020 priorities within these studies. Do we do them all? Do we do a few of them and get them started? And how we would fund them and the schedule for doing those.
Yeah, just stop real quick.
Yeah.
You said we don't have a survey. We had three appraisals done when we were negotiating the purchase price, so none of those appraisals did a survey?
We did a survey when we acquired the property, and it was a boundary survey owned only. Working with the attorney's office, we actually had to create a parcel, because the parcel did not exist, actually. We had to create a boundary survey, but the rest of the 308 acres to do some of this design work, we don't have survey elevations of the rest of the park.
Okay.
It's basically surveying within the 308 acres.
Within the 308 acres, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And then finally, the memorandum of understanding. We, meaning city staff, continuously have met with the Conservancy staff. We focused on a number of items related to communications, governance committees. Donor recognition and sponsorship has been identified as a priority for the Conservancy so that they can move forward some of their capital campaigns. We will bring back updates and feedback to the council in the first quarter of 2020 on the items that still remain related to the MOU to move that forward.
Okay.
And I just want to summarize, as Ruffin framed this conversation, we are hoping to move forward with a number of things. First, on your agenda today is the chapel and superintendent notification. We would bring back terms on November 19th. We would like to get authorization on November 5th to proceed with an RFQ for design services, and then bring back a contract early in 2020. And the remainder of the Phase Now projects with the Conservancy, we will bring recommendations back to council early in 2020. We're looking at some small park improvements, and as well as can the Conservancy help support some of those plans and studies that I just shared with you. And then finally, the last two bullets would be recommendations for how we would fund those plans and studies early in 2020, and then update the council and get feedback from the council in first quarter of 2020 on the MOU.
Okay. And you have up there, you said timing. I'm just looking at the project timeline, all the Phase One projects which you listed out there, so I'm just, that, I guess, we'd come back. Obviously, timing has to do with funding.
Correct.
We were going to pay for it, so just, I guess, in the ongoing planning, it would be helpful to get an idea of when those will start. You did do a good job of, you know, saying how many months you thought those different studies would take, but...
Yeah, the studies will really help drive what the true cost of the creek is, or the true cost of what the cemetery is. The master plan level did not get into that level of detail.
Yeah. Okay, great. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go forth and conquer. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Second item on your work session today is just a status update of the residential infill study. As you may recall, this is an item that was identified by council to do some analysis and study work on the issue of residential infill, and as a part of that, the staff has worked on a survey and soliciting ideas and thoughts. Purpose of today's presentation is to just simply update you on some of that feedback and discuss the next steps. This is continuing work in progress, so it's not concluded today, but this is a way of updating you and getting your feedback on where we are. So, with that, Ken Bowers with City Planning is here to make the presentation.
Great, thanks. I'm going to give a brief introduction, and then I'm going to turn the podium over to Roger Walden. You may recall that during my medical leave over the summer, Roger filled in as interim director, and substantial work was done under the study under his direction, and so for continuity purposes and also to help address workload issues within the department, Roger has continued to work with us as the executive sponsor of this study. So, to give an update, this was initiated back in 2018. We had our co-consultants under contract to study hillside development throughout the city, mostly focused on larger mixed-use and commercial sites, and the council instructed us to amend the contract and supplement the budget to study the issue of residential infill and to take a second look at the infill standards, which we had now had six years of implementation under our belt and see how they were going. That contract was executed in that fall, and there was an unfortunate period of quiescence in the study, and then work really resumed this summer. And what has been done is really the outreach and background research, and so we're going to present the findings from that and talk about the next phases of work where we feel like the most fruitful areas to concentrate are. So, in mid-August, we released a community survey. It was probably the most taken survey that we've ever issued in terms of the number of responses that we got, and that closed on September 30th, so we've been hard at work crunching the numbers from that. We have an interim report that was in your backup, and we'll continue to work and delve into that, including some of the qualitative data that came out of it from the long-form responses of the survey form allowed, where we're looking to tease out what are the common themes from what people said. And then we also did a public open house and some stakeholder engagement, and so we're ready to present on that as well. Just to refresh, when this was referred to us, there were six major items of concern that council adopted, and so what we're going to present is how these six items interface with the survey results and interface with the stakeholder input and our field observations in terms of determining what we think are the most fruitful changes going forward. So, they were looking at sidewall height, and especially the exception that is in the code for side gables and how development industry has taken advantage of that, the use of retaining walls and other mechanisms for essentially building up sites to flatten them out prior to development, what are the best practices for managing stormwater impacts on infill residential sites, house size. We don't currently directly regulate the floor area of infill houses or any houses, for that matter. We do have some regulations on the books that relate to impervious coverage, but they don't directly cover building footprint, as separate from other impervious materials such as driveways and decks. Grading and the cut and fill of sites, changes to the landform in already established neighborhoods, and then our administrative review processes. So, with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Roger to go through the rest of this.
Thank you, Ken, and good morning, Mayor and council members. This is a topic that is obviously of great concern to citizens of visitors of Raleigh with the concerns about the integrity of our existing residential areas and how we're doing at managing infill in those areas. I might say at the outset that Raleigh is not the only community that is looking at this. This is a topic, as infill is happening in a lot of cities, particularly around in the south, southeast, a lot of communities are grappling with this. So, this is our attempt to try and wrap our hands around it and protect the integrity of existing residential areas as redevelopment is occurring. As Ken mentioned, the first step that we, when we started working on this, again, in the summer, was constructing and administering a survey, an online survey. So happy about the extent of responses. We've got over 3,000 people responding to the survey. We had over 10,000 individual comments from those people about what they think is going on and what they would like to see and what they don't want to see. So, I'm delighted that the survey was so successful. You have in your packet a report that, a preliminary report, that highlights some of the quantitative answers that came back from the survey, and one of the things that we will want to do is go further digging into that, digging into those 10,000 comments and just trying to pull out the main themes and categorize them. Feedback we got from the survey, and this is survey feedback, but it's really feedback we got from the survey and from our outreach efforts. There were five, six different events where we went out into the community with our consultant and asked people what they think. So, a key for me, a key number for me, is that of the people that we have touched on this, 75% of them have concerns about what's going on with infill. And so, some are saying that the infill that's going on is impacting Raleigh in a negative way. Others are saying infill is okay for a couple of reasons, but there are some types of infill that are good and bad and that we need to be fine-tuning how we manage it. And then there are those who say, whose main concern is, we need more infill. We need more development in the city, taking care of, taking advantage of the infrastructure that we have. Some of the biggest concerns, and these are concerns about negative impacts that we heard, again, from the survey and from the outreach that we did engaging resident stakeholders. One is the erosion of affordability, that in a lot of the infill cases, an affordable unit is lost and replaced by something that is considerably more expensive. A second concern we heard was about a sorrow at the loss of viable structures, that we've got structures in these communities, in these neighborhoods, that are totally functional and are being removed for something else. The big, a lot of concern about stormwater runoff, as Ken mentioned, that was one of the initial charges of the council, was responding to concerns that we had heard from the community about the stormwater runoff impacts from infill development. And then another one that was really mentioned quite a lot was about the loss of green space and trees, and the loss of trees as sites are redeveloped in neighborhoods was something that a lot of people wanted to talk about. That second category about people who, there's people who didn't necessarily say that infill is bad or good, but they want things to fit in. They want the houses that are built to fit in, and what those folks were saying is that house size is very important, and that height of house setbacks, walls and terraces, the physical form of the new structures that are being built, in many cases, don't fit in with the existing neighborhood. Now, that's tricky, because there is some constraints that the city has in trying to regulate forms. Some things we can regulate, some things we can't. So, as Ken mentioned, we're going to be looking forward from here at trying to dig down into the things that, working with our attorney's office, what kinds of things can be addressed through regulations and which can't be, maybe through incentives or something else. So, we'll be looking at that. The feedback we got from the development community, two main comments that we were hearing, one is about the process, that a number of builders who were working on these houses were actively hoping for a more efficient and predictable process. And then the second thing, this is, I've heard this multiple times, that our current method of measuring height is problematic, especially on downward sloping sites when soil is being brought in. We need to rethink that, and we need to rethink that in general, but particularly in these infill areas. We mentioned in our report that we went out and looked at 50 properties in Raleigh where infill had occurred, and so these were some of our observations from those fieldwork. One is that clear cutting is a major impact, that that happens, and so what can we do about that? I've already mentioned, made reference to importing dirt to build up the site. The ground level has increasing impacts on measuring height and the height of structures. We were able to see that as we were driving around and looking. And then our stormwater regulations, we were noticing, as looking at it more carefully, don't necessarily address the direction, the velocity of stormwater, and we can probably do better about that. Ken already mentioned, and we have in the report, some discussion about side-gabled houses that can allow additional height. In some cases, that works great; in other cases, not so much, and we want to look at that again. The, one of the things that we noticed, again, in our survey, our driving around in our field visits, is that dormers and lower sidewalls can have less impact on adjoining property, and especially building offsets and setbacks can reduce the visual impact of a property. So, that's something that we can either look at requiring or incentivizing. So, given what we've done so far, we have identified several possible regulatory opportunities. First, dealing with setbacks, how we do that, and can we have another measurement and another standard for setbacks. We need to take a closer look at grading, cut and fill, and stormwater standards, what can we improve? The third bullet is an interesting one, incentives for tree preservation. There is probably not a lot we can do to require the preservation of trees, but there certainly are some things that we could be considering to provide incentives to make it more desirable for existing trees to be saved, and then for, as there being, those that are to be saved, be sure that the construction management... A second concern we heard was about a sorrow at the loss of viable structures, that we've got structures in these communities, in these neighborhoods, that are totally functional and are being removed for something else. The big, a lot of concern about stormwater runoff. As Ken mentioned, that was one of the initial charges of the council was responding to concerns that we had heard from the community about the stormwater runoff impacts from infill development. And then another one that was really mentioned quite a lot was about the loss of green space and trees. And the loss of trees as sites are redeveloped in neighborhoods was something that a lot of people wanted to talk about. That second category about people who, people who didn't necessarily say that infill is bad or good, but they want things to fit in. They want the houses that are built to fit in. And what those folks were saying is that house size is very important and that height of house setbacks, walls and terraces, the physical form of the new structures that are being built, in many cases, don't fit in with the existing neighborhood. Now, that's tricky because there is some constraints that the city has in trying to regulate forms. Some things we can regulate, some things we can't. So what, as Ken mentioned, we're going to be looking forward from here at trying to dig down into the things that, working with our attorney's office, what kinds of things can be addressed through regulations and which can't be, maybe through incentives or something else. So we'll be looking at that. The feedback we got from the development community, two main comments that we were hearing. One is about the process, that a number of builders who are working on these houses were actively hoping for a more efficient and predictable process. And then the second thing, this is, I've heard this multiple times, that our current method of measuring height is problematic, especially on downward sloping sites when soil is being brought in. We need to rethink that. And we need to rethink that in general, but particularly in these infill areas. We mentioned in our report that we went out and looked at 50 properties in Raleigh where infill had occurred. And so these were some of our observations from those fieldwork. One is that clearcutting is a major impact, that that happens, and so what can we do about that? I've already mentioned, made reference to importing dirt to build up the site. Its ground level has increasing impacts on measuring height and the height of structures. And we were able to see that as we were driving around and looking. And then our stormwater regulations, we were noticing, as looking at it more carefully, don't necessarily address the direction and velocity of stormwater, and we can probably do better about that. The, Ken already mentioned, and we have in the report, some discussion about side-gabled houses that can allow additional height. In some cases, that works great. In other cases, not so much. And we want to look at that again. One of the things that we noticed, again, in our survey, our driving around in our field visits, is that dormers and lower sidewalls can have less impact on adjoining property. And especially building offsets and setbacks can reduce the visual impact of a property. So that's something that we can either look at requiring or incentivizing. So given what we've done so far, we have identified several possible regulatory opportunities. First, dealing with setbacks, how we do that, and can we have another measurement and another standard for setbacks. We need to take a closer look at grading, cut and fill, and stormwater standards. What can we improve? The third bullet is an interesting one, incentives for tree preservation. There is probably not a lot we can do to require the preservation of trees, but there certainly are some things that we could be considering to provide incentives to make it more desirable for existing trees to be saved. And then for, as there being, those that are to be saved, be sure that the construction management is working well to help save them. House size isn't regulated, impervious surface limits are. One of the things that has come up about house size and floor ratio, again, it's not something that we can directly regulate, but in the case of an overlay conservation district, it might be something that we can be building in about that. And then we want to look again to see what, if there are any provisions or incentives or something that can help discourage demolition and such that additions can certainly be allowed, encouraged, but should be considered as an alternative to demolition whenever possible. The things we're going to be looking at as we're moving forward here now, looking more at stormwater management, at retaining walls and cut and fill, looking at sidewall heights, tree preservation incentives, and house size in overlay districts, to see what, if there is some progress that can be made there. Next steps after today, we are going to study those 3,000 survey responses a little more carefully and come up with... This is interesting. That's a tough one, because there are a lot of very interesting comments in those 10,000 comments, and we were originally thinking about bringing some of those to you. But anybody, any one person that is selecting what comments to bring forward is asking for trouble. So when we bring our full report of this, one of the things we're probably do is include all the report, all the comments that everybody can see and try to put them into categories. But we're going to, and we're going to dig a little bit deeper into the surveys. We're going to, the next two items, policy audit and modeling and testing, we're going to take what we learned and what we learned from our site visits and looking at some of these examples and what we heard from the community, and look again, take a harder look at our existing ordinances and regulations, policies, what can be, what could be adjusted if we wanted to, and then model and test those to see how that would work. I mentioned that Raleigh is not the only community that is dealing with this issue. And so one of the things, we've already started this, and we want to bring in some more examples, best practices from other communities, what has worked in other communities to try and better manage the infill that's occurring everywhere. And then the final report will be something that we'll bring to you. And our current timeframe is to have that final report to you in December so that then you could be looking at discussing it and then providing further direction on where to go from there. So I'll stop there, Mayor, and see if there are questions, discussions, council members want to make. And I've got, we've got several planning staff here who could probably help answer questions that I can't.
Okay.
My question is, as far as SMAC and the stormwater regulations, at what point will they be involved to kind of help formulate recommendations?
We're already talking.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's, and the stormwater's been doing a lot of work over there, and so we're trying to coordinate how we're approaching this.
Okay, that's good to know. And also, other community members, if in case they want to attend a SMAC meeting, can hear more about the stormwater stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yep. This may be a question for you, it may be one for one of the other planning staffers. So I've seen this study is relating mostly to the impacts of residential infill development on adjacent residential infill development. And so it's, you know, it's height, it's stormwater, it's a variety of things. We have a sort of a parallel conversation going on in the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, but it's the relationship of if we do away with the 50-foot no-build, that's the transition between a mixed-use lot and residential, then I guess, again, question for you or for staff is, how do you see some of these kinds of compatibility issues being part of a conversation about if we do away with the 50-foot no-build, do these kind of compatibility issues then apply in a circumstance where it's a mixed-use lot next to a residential lot?
And Ken will help answer that when I offer my, some of my thoughts is that the impact of infill development on adjacent parcels is certainly the primary, the first thing to be looking at, but also looking at the impact on a neighborhood overall and how the setbacks apply to other properties along the street is also something that we're looking at. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that looking at a full neighborhood and adjacencies to a neighborhood, in addition to adjacencies to a particular lot, is relevant and important.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is there is a desire to look at extending something like the model that was adopted for the historic alleys to look at different development option for the back of a mixed-use property. That would be lower-scale residential fronting on a vehicular alley. And I think, you know, we would want to look within the framework of what we're allowed to regulate. Obviously, height and bulk, we're totally allowed to regulate. Frontage on the alley is something we're allowed to regulate. Certain design elements for one and two-family, in townhouse, we are not, but we are still, I think, able to come to some standards that would probably result in a compatible form. And then, of course, with the stormwater issues, the alley itself could provide stormwater conveyance and provide something to capture stormwater to keep it from leaving the mixed-use site and trespassing on a residential site. And we think that would be something that we would want to look at to make sure that those impacts were handled.
What about regrading issues?
Um...
On a mixed-use parcel budding residential?
Well, you know, if you're going to front the building on the alley with a small setback, that probably in some cases would limit the type of regrading that you could do, but we could look at that as well. The hillside study, which is still pending and hasn't come to you, has some recommendations for how we deal with retaining walls and cut and fill within the 50-foot no-build.
Right.
And I think that would be relevant for this as well, because right now, that's not entirely clear in the code, although we believe the clear intent was that that height limit would be inclusive of retaining walls.
Yeah, I think one thing about that, Ken, is that the, when someone goes in and they raise the grade on their property beside another home that's already been there, like six and eight, 10 feet in some cases, we need to do something about that, because it just looks absolutely ridiculous. Plus, they're looking down on somebody, and it also creates stormwater issues for those folks.
Right. That was definitely something that we observed in the field observations.
So my point related to if we're going, of course, the 50-foot no-build rule that's part of the residential transition between mixed-use and residential lot was a way to deal with some of those contextual issues. But obviously, if we're going to talk about doing away with a 50-foot no-build, then all those contextual issues that are seen between two residential uses, those are going to be the same issues.
And I think you're also speaking to the pending discussion about the detached frontage and whether or not...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. Exactly the same issues apply there, because we'd be talking about a detached structure on a lot that could encroach into that rear yard and be closer to the rear yard, similar to how a residential use could be today.
Right. So the grading up and stormwater, all those things.
Yes.
So I guess my question then is, does it make sense for us to pause the Healthy Neighborhoods conversation about doing away with the 50-foot no-build until this study is more further along and we have more conclusive policies in place, new regulations in place?
There, I think there could be some utility to doing that, yes.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
So I just have one other question, Matt, is you've talked about the, that there's still a lot of results that aren't incorporated into this? You said there's like 10,000...
Oh, 10,000 comments. We've read them. But we're not asking you to read them yet.
Well, we appreciate that.
We will.
But you've already tallied them up to come up with these.
Absolutely.
Okay, it sounded like there were still items that weren't included in this, because...
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, we've done enough work to ensure that we're representing the major findings from the survey accurately. It's just that there's a level of nuance in writing up the qualitative responses that we felt would benefit from more time before it being transmitted in written form.
Okay. Any other questions? And did you need, just informational update?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.